I was looking for the mayor and I didn't know where that voice was coming from.
We snuck in. You know, it's with great honor that I stand before you today. I made a comment yesterday that I can, seems like I distinctly remember Jay Watkins telling me how long he had served, this was a couple of years ago, how long he had served on the Planning Commission, how many more days, how many more weeks, months and days he had to do it, to serve. But Jay has done a magnificent job, Jay, and so we appreciate what you've done. And so we have a certificate of appreciation that reads, "Mr. Jay Watkins is hereby officially recognized for over 12 years of service as a Planning Commissioner for the City of Mobile. On behalf of all Mobileans, we thank you for your selfless dedication, done this sixth day of October in the year of our Lord 2016. City of Mobile proclaimed by William S. Simpson, the mayor." Congratulations, Jay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. All right. With that, Mr. Olson, are you ready to go forward? I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 6, 2016, Meeting of the Mobile City Planning Commission. I'd like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and the deliberation session. In the public hearing session, an application or group application on the agenda is called. The applicant makes his or her presentation. Commission members may ask questions if they have any, and members of the public may make their comments. Only four people may speak for an agenda item or project and for against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by commission members. And after four minutes, a beep will indicate one minute left to speak, and at that point, we would ask you to summarize your comments. After all opposition speakers have finished, the applicant will be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, and give your name and address for our minutes. Please direct all comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or the audience. Please remember to speak into the microphone. On routine applications, the applicant may simply raise his or her hand if there are no questions about the staff recommendations and conditions. I will then announce that the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations and conditions. If there are any questions, the applicant will be given opportunity to respond. After hearing all applications, the commission will go into deliberation session. In the deliberation session, the commissioners discuss each application with input from the staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. Commissioners then vote on each application, and the results of the voting may be learned from the Planning Commission at 208-5895. If some issues arise during the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, the chairman has discretion to either allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them, or call for that application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more commission members may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. A recusal does not necessarily mean the member is directly involved with the application or with the applicant. Depending upon the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there's only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. If a regular member recuses, a supernumerary will vote in their stead, unless both supernumeraries are already voting due to absence. The Planning Commission makes final decisions, subject to appeal, on subdivisions, planning approvals, and planned unit developments. The Planning Commission only makes recommendations on zoning applications, with the final decision being made by the city council. At this time, I would ask you to please silence or turn off your cellphone. I'd remind staff to please use their microphones when addressing the commission. And we'll call the roll. Mr. Gant? Ms. Denson? Mr. Valles? Mr. Doyle? Ms. Sessions? Ms. Andrews? Mr. Amberger?
Here.
Ms. Rich?
Here.
Mr. Hembry?
Here.
Ms. Latham? Mr. Cameron? Due to absence, Mr. Cameron, you'll be voting on all applications today. With that, let's go to our agenda. First item is a holdover. I'm sorry, first item is new subdivision application for 610 St. Anthony Street. Applicant present? Applicant's present. He's indicated he's in agreement with staff recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, that has been withdrawn by the applicant.
All right. We'll go to item number two, subdivision application for 3200 Moffett Road. Applicants present, indicate he's in agreement with staff recommendations and conditions. Anyone here needing information on item number two, subdivision at 3200 Moffett Road, or here in opposition? All right, we'll move to item number three.
And Mr. Chairman, that's been withdrawn as well.
Yep. More Sussex Place Estate subdivision. Applicant has been, application has been withdrawn by the applicant. So we'll move to item number four. 3708, 3712, and 3720 Dolphin Street. Applicants indicated he's in agreement with staff recommendations and conditions. Anyone here needing information on item number four, subdivision at 3708 Dolphin Street? Move to item number five, subdivision application for 8550 Dolphin Island Parkway. Applicants indicated he's in agreement with staff recommendations and conditions. Is there anyone here needing information on item number five, subdivision application for 8550 Dolphin Island Parkway, or who is here in opposition? Go to item number six. It's a subdivision application for 6250, 6280 Spanish Trail Court. Applicants indicated he's in agreement with all staff recommendations and conditions. Anyone here needing information on item number six, subdivision at 6250 Spanish Trail Court? Yes, sir, please come down. Did you need information on that item?
Yeah.
All right, please come down. If you could give us your name and address, please.
Harold Hollandhead, 13500 Jeffrey Road, Wilmer, Alabama.
Yes, sir. What can we do for you?
I was just wanting to get some more information on, that was all it was.
All right. Mr. Byrd, do you want to come down and speak to this gentleman?
Jerry Byrd, Burt Surveying Company. Yes, the owner of the subdivision owns three lots. It's been developed with two buildings. He's wishing to sell one building, which is straddle of a lot line. And so it's just taking three lots and making two, no other changes.
Moving an interior lot line?
Yeah.
And eliminating one lot?
Correct.
So I could talk to you later?
Oh, yeah, we can go talk now.
Yes, sir. Anyone else need information on item number six? 6250 and 6280 Spanish Trail Court. We'll go to item number seven. This is a subdivision, Cottage Hill Place. Chair is recused on this. Mr. Gant will take the chair, please.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to point out that additional information has been placed at each of your locations. The applicant provided a revised narrative with this request and explained the need for the subdivision and having lot two to be isolated. And we also discussed this with legal counsel, Mr. Anderson, who advised us that with a dedicated access easement, as shown on the preliminary plat and as you can see on the illustration behind you, that it would be in compliance with subdivision regulations as it relates to access to a public street.
This is, as the write-up is currently written up to be held over, is the applicant present? Could you? Could the applicant please come down? Based on your additional submittal, it says you're asking for approval today. Have you seen the conditions?
Yes, sir. We have had discussions with staff. Our team has discussed with staff, and all the conditions that have been placed on the project to make it compliant, we have agreed with those conditions.
Okay. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Is there anyone here to speak against? We can hear for, could, you're welcome to come speak.
Yes, sir. I'm William Kent. I live at Cumberland, 2605 Cumberland Place. And I have a lot of questions that I'd like to address the board with. First off, we were only given notice that they were planning on putting a subdivision just seven days ago. And we had a lot of concerns about it because the traffic, traffic is one of the big issues out there. Has there been any traffic studies? And from what I understand, is they're proposing an 80-unit housing subdivision in their apartments. And a couple of questions I had, and we don't know for sure. We've heard these are Section 8 housing, low-rent housing. We've heard several rumors, but it's been such short notice, we haven't really been able to find out a whole lot about it.
Okay. When did, did we, could you, notices went out, when?
The notices, I believe, went out, or actually were put in the mail two weeks ago, but because they are sent certified return receipt, sometimes it takes longer for people to get them because if they're not home to sign for it, they actually have to go to the post office to sign for it. But we send out the notices as, in as timely a manner as we are required to.
So for a subdivision, they only would have gone to the adjoining property owners?
Adjoining and directly across the street.
Are notices, property notice signs put up on subdivision or just zoning?
Just zoning and variances in planning approvals.
Well, only very few of our people that live in our subdivision was notified of this. Just, there was only four, five letters delivered that I know of.
It would have only been, it would have only been delivered to the owners who abut Cottage Hill and not the owners who say were on the other side of the street within your subdivision because they have to abut the, they have to be immediately across the street. Their property actually has to be across the street to receive notice on the subdivision application. It's there.
One of the other questions that I had for the board was, is this, was this a city project that was moved into the county?
This is not a city project that has been moved. All we know is that it's a project in the county that's been submitted by, the applicant is a developer. And how the applicant is developing the property, that's not to our knowledge. We just respond to the application.
Can anybody tell us exactly what they're planning on building there?
You would have to speak to the owner. We could ask them. The owner's representative could shed some light on it, I believe. You would have to ask him. We are only dealing with subdividing of the property here. We don't, we have no jurisdiction in the county over what goes on the property. So this is really just a technical review that we're doing that deals with property, the property being re-subdivided into various lots for their development use. But we don't have any say-so or any clarity on what they put on it because they're in the county. So from our standpoint, it doesn't matter what's going on it. We're strictly dealing with property lines.
So the board's not concerned what they put there? They just want to subdivide it?
Yes, that's all we're concerned with here.
If it's okay, I don't believe there is zoning in this area per se, correct?
No, ma'am. This is in the county, so there is no zoning outside the city limits. All that's before the commission today is the subdivision of land.
Well, we as homeowners had a big concern about what they're putting across the street from us.
That's understandable, sir, and you're welcome to, I'm sure the developer would speak with you outside, offline, but as far as what's going on it in this meeting, we don't have, that doesn't apply here. We don't have jurisdiction in the county over what goes on properties.
Well, who do we address to get to place our concerns on what's being built over there?
I'll jump in there. I mean, I think what they're using is Alabama Fair Housing puts out tax credits for these developers to develop affordable housing. I can't speak to whether they're Section 8, and that's not relevant to us. But, but then they also get the Alabama Fair Housing tax credits, as well as to get county home funds. So I would think the county commissioner would probably be more appropriate to voice your concerns with on this matter, as the county expended county home funds to assist this development.
And there's somebody in the building today who's representing this subdivision. So if they could be identified, perhaps they could lead you to some more information as well. And I don't remember who stepped forward.
Yeah, but y'all don't approve what's actually built there or anything. All y'all doing is approving the subdivision, dividing of the land.
Yes, sir.
Right. But there is somebody right here, like I said, they'll raise their hand.
Can I just make, I just need to make one comment and just add to what Mr. Valles said regarding tax credits. Typically, when we say tax credits, that we're using tax credits, they're not all Section 8. When we say affordable house, I think that's the mixed nomer. When people say affordable housing, they think it's Section 8, and it's not. They just make sure that the rent is affordable. And many times, your tax credits are used for senior citizens' housing who cannot afford the full price of a full rent. So when we say using tax credits, because that's what a lot of banks do as far as investments in those particular projects, they are not Section 8 projects. But a lot of them are for senior citizens.
Right. We have one senior citizen place right across the street from our entrance now. And we just had a lot of concerns about the traffic issues. The cities want to pull their jurisdiction back. You know, they're talking about pulling out of the county now to provide police and fire protection. And we have fire trucks running out past it every day. And if we add 80 more units of housing out there, we will have a problem.
And typically, those low-income housing tax credit deals are very well maintained. They really enhance the area. So whoever the developer, who's the for-profit developer, you can talk to them and see what type of development they've done across the state.
Richard?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make the point that even if this development were in the city, the commission legally cannot consider, should not even discuss whether it is affordable housing, low income, Section 8, because of the Fair Housing Act. It's illegal for that to be any part of consideration of a decision. So I think that discussion at this point needs to not continue.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I wasn't concerned that much about, you know, the low housing, you know, Section 8 housing, but just the traffic issue adding 80 more families right there at Cottage Hill. We have a very, very serious traffic issue now.
It's about a 47-acre tract, and this Planning Commission has routinely approved subdivisions that, you know, have been in the two to three lots per acre range. So if somebody was going to develop this property for a single family, they could get as many as 140 homes on there in this application. This application isn't specified on number of units, but I think it was discussed it was about 80 units, which is actually far or less than they could develop and maximize from a single-family standpoint.
Well, that's probably part of the rumors that we've heard that this is just Phase 1, the 80 units. Then they're talking about coming back later with Phase 2 and put a whole bunch more units in there.
Okay, sir. Do we know, is there?
Just for the record, again, we're just strictly looking at subdivision today. We're taking one lot and turning it into three, three lots, and that's all we as a Planning Commissioner are looking at today.
I thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak against? Okay, thank you.
Can I ask some questions?
You would have to come to the podium, please.
I'm June Martin. I live in Cumberland, 7580 Cumberland Court. Who's the developer for this, and how do we get to talk to him?
It is Penrose Property, and we have a representative right there.
Okay, but what's the name of the developer? Do we know?
Uh, the Penrose Properties is.
And there's one thing that I'm a little bit unclear of. If, if the city doesn't have anything to do with this, or can say what is being built there, and this is county, why is the city even involved?
Because they're in our planning jurisdiction, and inside the planning jurisdiction, we handle subdivisions, applications with land, and this happens to fall within that zone. But in that zone, there are no zoning requirements in the county. And so that's why we're zoning with, deal more with what goes on it versus our subdivision. We only, this is only dealing with how the land is divided.
So you just approved that, okay, it's all right for a subdivision, and it has three lots, and you don't care what goes there?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, however they so choose.
You have no say whatsoever?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. We can hear one more?
TJ Cap, 7535 Cumberland Court. My understanding is, is that part of this property is wetlands? Are y'all familiar with that?
Correct.
Can you tell us how much of the property, how many acres is actual wetlands and is zoned or restricted at this point in time from development?
The lot three, as illustrated on that map, is the area that is delineated as wetlands, and it is separated out as a separate lot, so that it would not be developed. The lots one and two compromise, are comprised of approximately 11.75 acres of the overall site. Single-family residential subdivision in that area could potentially be, as Mr. Valles stated earlier, around 40 lots, give or take, because of the road construction that maybe, or would be required. So.
All right. That being wetlands, has the state and the Army Corps of Engineers done a survey study to determine what impact development of these two lots could have on that wetlands?
That question.
We don't have that information, but they will have to comply with all ADEM regulations.
But at this point in time, there has been no study, there has been no?
We have no information.
Okay.
And again, with there being no zoning, even though you, obviously, when you look at the map, it is highly residential, single-family. The only thing before us is dividing the land up.
And that was my question, in dividing this land and development of the land. You're saying you're dealing with that.
Apartments or townhomes or whatever's coming is more in keeping because technically, that could be, there's just, all bets are off in the county because once they get it divided, they have any use under the sun, to be quite honest. Because there is no classification and orderly development like you get within the city limits as best as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to number, item number eight. Does the owner have anything else they would like to say?
My name is Douglas Spain Howard. I'm a construction manager with Checkers Restaurants, 4300 West Cypress Street, Tampa, Florida. I am just here to answer any questions that you may have on this presentation. It's all right. I'm sorry, did you say number eight? I did say number eight.
Yeah, I thought we were taking back the rebuttal.
We're going to be, we're on eight, that's fine. Well, Mr. Valles is going to be recused. And I think you indicated you were fine with all the conditions or requirements of this application. The staff's report? Just give us one second, let everybody clear out. All right, let's try this again. We're going to call number eight. It's recommended for a holdover. I understand you're here to answer any questions. For those of you here in the audience, if you're here for number eight, that's been recommended for a holdover to November 3 by the staff. If you're here today to speak, we're certainly willing to hear your comments and questions. Otherwise, this matter will most likely be held over to November 3. Mr. Valles, you want to come back up? We'll go to item number nine. This is a group application for 1305, 1307 Spring Hill Avenue. It's a subdivision request and a rezoning. Applicant present, applicant's present indicated he's in agreement with staff recommendations and conditions. Is there anybody here needing information on item number nine, the subdivision and rezoning at 1305 Spring Hill Avenue?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just an interesting point. When staff was working on this, it was discovered that the existing B3 portion of this site, or at least part of it, is zoning amendment number one from when the current ordinance and map was adopted in 1967. I said, just an interesting little fact.
Very interesting.
All right, we'll move to item number 10. It's 2320 Dolphin Island Parkway. It's a subdivision and a rezoning. And I would point out to commission members that you've got a couple of letters at your podium with respect to this particular application. Is the applicant present, applicant's present indicated they're in agreement with staff recommendations? Anybody here needing information on item number 10, the subdivision and rezoning at 2320 Dolphin Island Parkway?
I have a question.
Ms. Denson?
Excuse me. Do the recommendations that we're seeing from the staff, do they take in account the requests for the fence and for the fencing?
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
The recommendations we have in front of us from the staff, do they take in account the requests from the citizens on the fencing? No? Would the applicant, has he seen these letters, and is he aware of the requests by the neighbors?
No, I don't believe the applicant is aware of the emails that we have received regarding their request.
Trainee, would you come down, please, or your engineer, one of the two of y'all, please? Mr. Trainee, there's a couple of letters here from adjoining landowners. One of them is requesting a privacy fence to separate the apartments from the adjoining residential properties.
Yes, and we've told both property owners that we would erect a privacy fence along property lines.
Okay. Staff, can we include that as part of the conditions?
Is that the south property line or the west?
Sir? I'm sorry, yes, sir, we can include that, and we'll state that the applicant agreed to provide the fence.
Okay.
I believe it's the north and west property lines.
Yeah, okay.
South and west.
Yep, all right.
South, yeah. This is, no, this is south, that's west.
Would the fence requirement go under subdivision or the zoning?
Zoning. It could be placed on subdivision as well, but zoning is probably the most appropriate location.
Any further questions by commission members? Thank you, Mr. Trainee.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number 11. It's 4101 Wimbledon Drive West. This is a subdivision and planned, planning approval. Applicant in, present? Applicant's present, indicated he's in agreement with staff recommendations and conditions. Anyone here needing information on item number 11, 4101 Wimbledon Drive West?
Didn't we just do that?
We just saw this probably a month and a half ago.
You saw, I believe, the planned unit development, and this is the subdivision and planning approval, which the subdivision case had been heard several years ago, but the engineering firm never completed it. And they've since gone out of business, so they have to recomplete everything.
Does the work on this project, would it trigger any type of sidewalk requirements?
I have a question about the fence. It may seem minor, but it just calls for a four-foot. It may seem minor, but, um, it just calls for a four-foot aluminum fence. Do you have any idea the nature of that? I mean...
Well, the, the application includes a proposal to construct a fence around the north golf course that's going to be reconstructed, and they propose to replace existing, uh, split rail fence, wooden fence, with a metal fence, uh, four-foot high aluminum. I don't believe that they provided any additional information about the aesthetics of that fence, or the design. Yeah, we make the assumption, perhaps erroneously, that it would be a black fence similar to a wrought iron appearance, but it is ultimately up to the country club.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I have a question, cause I remember this one about the sidewalk along Airport. What property they control along Airport? Does staff give that any thought? Cause I know that the shopping center got a variance for most of the property, except for what they put in front of the old Blockbuster. So technically, they're starting a path, which is a good thing, but I just wondered whether that was something you considered.
They already had a sidewalk waiver based on a previous approval, and what is being requested, proposed, is not significantly different. It just, because, as Mr. Hoffman stated, the, the previous approval expired, different company, that one went out of business, they had to go through the process again. Nothing has changed with regard to the sidewalk waiver that was previously approved.
So they don't have to reapply for a sidewalk waiver? Or it's just gonna, assuming that it's automatically granted?
Well...
Cause I, I understand where you're going, but then perhaps this should have been administrative, because it seems as though there's no, there's really, it's a very minor thing with a company change, as opposed to, unless I'm incorrect on that.
Well, it also expired. We don't have the, when other approvals are required, we don't have the authority, administrative authority. It's only when no other approvals are required, or have already been obtained or in effect.
So then, the sidewalk waiver technically would be off too, the table? Just saying. I'm trying to get sidewalks, as I know how costly that is to the system.
I think Mr. Anderson looked at that on the last pass, and advised that the, so, the sidewalk waiver did not go away, did not require to be reinstated or anything like that with respect to the, what we saw last month.
Because it's not redevelopment.
It's not redevelopment, and there's nothing being done here that would trigger... Now, I, I can't speak to whether the expiration of the underlying subdivision creates an issue or not. I would think if we approve the subdivision with the sidewalk waiver, the last pass, this subdivision has not changed, it's just simply going through the motions of approving the subdivision plat, so that it can now be re-signed and recorded.
Yes, sir.
And we're not asking for sidewalks around the whole property. I'm trying to just get it on Airport, which is such a busy corridor, and it's nice to keep people out of harm's way when you can't, cause there's a path there. Certainly could accommodate one.
Again, as Mr. Watkins just said, based on legal counsel's opinion, when this came up, when the planning appro, excuse me, the PUD came up a few months ago, that it did not warrant requirement of a new sidewalk waiver, I think the same would apply with this planning approval and subdivision.
Okay, I hear your point, but like I said, for some reason, that Pine Brook Shopping Center has to put in just a little tiny one under, but all the other sidewalk was waived, and...
All the other sidewalk was waived?
Yeah.
Against staff recommendation?
I hear ya.
Yeah, along Airport.
I hear ya, and that's why I'm trying to push it here, but, okay.
And when was that original waiver done?
It might have, I don't remember exactly, but it might have been sep, uh, twenty-eleven? Let me check. The meeting date was February twenty-thirteen.
Twenty-thirteen?
Do we want to take this up in deliberation, and move to deliberation at this point? Or are there questions of the applicant that need to be addressed at this point? Hearing nothing, I think we will move to deliberation. We can certainly take up this question, uh, when item eleven comes up for discussion. So, with that, we'll move to deliberation session. Go to item number one. This is a new subdivision application at six-ten St. Anthony Street. That has been withdrawn by the applicant. Go to item two, subdivision application for thirty-two hundred Moffett Road.
Move, we approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Latham, second by Ms. Denson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three is a subdivision application for Moore Sussex Place Estates. That has been withdrawn by the applicant. Go to item number four, subdivision application for thirty-seven oh eight, thirty-seven twelve, thirty-seven twenty Dolphin Street.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sessions, second by Ms. Rich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Go to item number five, this is eighty-five fifty Dolphin Island Parkway, subdivision application.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hembry, second by Ms. Sessions. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Go to item number six, subdivision application for sixty-two fifty, sixty-two eighty Spanish Trail Court.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sessions, second by Ms. Latham. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Go to item number seven, this is a subdivision application for the north side of Cottage Hill at East Cumberland. Chair is recused.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations with the additional conditions that have been spelled out, uh, by staff.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Are we ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Passed.
Mr. Gant, we'll move to new plan unit development applications. This is item number eight, nineteen twenty-four through twenty-two twenty-two Dolphin Island Parkway at nineteen twenty-three Ryder's Lane. This is recommended for a holdover till November third, twenty sixteen. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second by Ms. Rich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, was Mr. Valas recused on that, I believe?
Yes, Mr. Valas was recused on item number eight. Go to group applications, this is item number nine, thirteen oh five, thirteen oh seven Spring Hill Avenue. This is a subdivision application and a rezoning. I think we can take both of those together.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sessions, second by Mr. Amberger. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Go to item number ten, this is a subdivision and rezoning at twenty-three twenty Dolphin Island Parkway at Willowdale Street.
Clarification real quick, please, on the, uh, privacy fence, what property line was, were we talking about, that on the south and north?
South and west.
South and west.
I understand where people get concerned, confused with the directionality, because of Dolphin Island Parkway assumed to run north-south, but as you can see from the map, in this area, it, it runs at an angle, so we would consider the Dolphin Island Parkway property line the north property line, because it is on the north side of the property. So, it would be along the west and south.
You're gonna tie that to the rezoning?
Correct.
Condition on the rezoning? Great.
Move to approve based on staff recommendation, adding the eight-foot privacy, well, are we able to say a certain size privacy fence in the standard eight foot?
Uh, I think, stan, well, standard is six, and I think he said he agreed to six. He said eight?
Did he say six or eight? The residents wrote eight. They did write six, I thought you wrote eight. Okay.
I had eight written down, but, uh, that's, that's the way I...
Six foot. Stand corrected.
That's from the resident.
And that's standard.
Okay.
Six foot is the standard.
Move to approve based on staff recommendation, adding the requirement of a six-foot privacy fence on the south and the west property line, uh, in the zoning requirements.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Hembry, a second by Ms. Sessions. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Go to item number eleven, this is forty-one oh one Wimbledon Drive West. This is a subdivision and planning approval. Think we can take these together.
Move for approval, subject to staff recommendation.
Motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Cameron. Is there further discussion?
Well, I'll ask if anybody's interested in that stretch along Airport for, uh, sidewalk up, and I forget the name of the street, Bellevue Circle, I think it is? Those two? I mean, I, I'm gonna just throw it out there, because I would feel like I wasn't doing my job if I didn't, cause someday, someone's gonna have to do that. So, that gets anyone...
So was that an amendment offered by Ms. Rich?
It, it would be added as a condition to whichever one it needs to be added, so if anyone wants to agree, and see if it gets the votes, I just...
I think we're all in favor of, of sidewalks, and, I mean, we want that, and we're very determined to make sure we get that when we can. The question is, can we, can we add that, that requirement on there legally?
Coming in for a planning approval.
Well, the, the big question, and I think the point Mr. Anderson was making when he said that he didn't feel that the application le, PUD warranted it, is there truly a nexus between what is occurring on the north property, north of Wimbledon, that would require a sidewalk along Airport Boulevard? Is there a nexus between the two?
Is there a driveway there that they use?
There is a driveway to access the maintenance building, but so...
The maintenance building that is for maintenance of the eighteen pole, which is gonna be a different lot under the subdivision application.
So, at this point, are we asking, is the issue that we're asking to amend the exist, the motion that's on the table currently that's been seconded? And do we need to vote on the request of that amendment?
I did not hear a second on the motion to amend.
No, there's a motion to amend, but it has not been seconded.
Correct.
All right, so, do we, does it fail for lack of a second?
Yes, sir.
And we will call the question, unless there's further discussion, we'll call the question on the motion by Mr. Gant, which has been seconded by Mr. Cameron. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, with that, we will move to other business. Um, we have the request of staff to seek clarification regarding discussion of administrative residential sidewalk waivers at the September twenty-second business meeting. Mr. Olson?
Yes, sir. Uh, as you may recall, at that business meeting, we brought up several issues, one of which was sidewalks, and the fact that currently, under previous commission's allowance directive, whatever you would like to call it, policy, staff was authorized to grant administrative sidewalk waivers for residential properties, uh, and the parameters were basically, if there's not a sidewalk in the area, then the sidewalk waiver should be granted regardless of topo, anything like that, whether it could be constructed or not. Uh, there have been some issues recently where that has been questioned as appropriate. We brought it up at the meeting, some commission members seemed to think that it, or it sounded to staff that, some thought it may not be appropriate for staff to have that authority. So, we would like clarification from y'all on whether you would like to continue with it, with the parameters that exist today, that it's simply, there's not sidewalks in the neighborhood, or continue with other parameters, such as the, a, as you consider that there is a physical reason that it cannot be constructed, or whether you would prefer that those applications come to the commission.
How many, I, I think I asked this question at the business meeting, but how many of these type administrative requests do y'all get monthly?
It, it varies. Basically, they are on new construction, for a new house.
That's on an existing neighborhood, is, I think I recall what you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Personally, I think, basically, with, with the complete streets initiative that's in place right now, and for consistency purposes, I, I think we would want to maybe have those come before the commission, so that we can vet that, but I mean, I'm just thinking out loud, I, I'm, I'm, I'm about to be off the commission not knowing, not having to hear all those, so it's hard for me to throw that burden on you guys, but it just, it sounds like, uh, that, that it's a little bit different arena than it was several years ago, when administrative sidewalk waivers might have been more appropriate, and I think, given the mayor's initiative and where we're headed with walkability and things like that.
Is this a situation in which you have an existing neighborhood that has no sidewalks, and then someone happens to be building a house in that neighborhood, and so now they, and you were able to grant a waiver for that administratively?
Yes, sir. And, and that was applicable whether it was an already vacant lot, or if, as in many cases in different parts of town, somebody demolishes a house and builds a new one.
For, for the staffs and for everybody's kind of perspective, engineering department recently has a lot of experience with dealing with sidewalks, I mean, several million dollars worth of it. And, and what, what, what seems to be a common occurrence is if the subdivision, when it was originally built, if it was not intended to have sidewalks, or, and slopes weren't leveled, in most cases, it's, it's very hard to go back and retrofit. If it had sidewalks and there was pieces that were missing, generally, it's fairly easy to fill it back in. So, I mean, I, I'm kind of in favor of letting the staff make those common sense decisions, cause I think they're, I think they do it, and I think they do, do a good job of it. Something that I would like to see us discuss, and I don't know if it's ever been that this, that the commission's ever pursued this before, is a sidewalk bank. Somewhere where, where, you know, you're not fully relieving an entity of, of the responsibility of sidewalks, but oftentimes, to construct a sidewalk and for it to make sense from A to B, is, is a pretty significant effort. I mean, if, if, if you're having to go in there and retrofit something, and so oftentimes, we have, you know, forced folks to build sidewalks, or there're gonna be sidewalks to nowhere, from nowhere, for a long, 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 long time. And I know we've all taken the position of trying to, trying to make it more walk, make the city more walkable, but in a lot of cases, where the only potential entity that could really build the sidewalks appropriately, where they made sense from a beginning and an ending point, would be if the city took it on as a capital, capital undertaking, cause oftentimes, it's, it's piping ditches and, and building retaining walls, and it's not just a, a standard situation where you're just pouring, you know, flat sidewalk. I mean, you're really doing a more infrastructure-y type of project, so...
And I think, because the sidewalk bank discussion has come up more than once before, I think that is something that, since it's co, come up again, needs to be vetted by the legal department, because Mr. Lawler, when he was the attorney for the planning commission, said that it wasn't legal to do that, which is why it was not done previously. So, um, it, we will, if you ask or direct us to, we will present that to the legal department, and let them look into it and bring an answer back to you.
Yeah, I, I would like to see that, because I mean, that, that would give us a way to, we're not really saying no to their responsibility as a sidewalk, but we'd be, we would be making more common sense, uh, decisions. Yeah, and, and in fact, the one that this bring, brought up about the, uh, about golf courses is a prime example. I mean, that would take care of one little block, and might connect the golf course maintenance shed to, to the shopping center, but it's not gonna connect the next subdivision where it really starts having, having impact, and for, for us to take that on would be a fairly significant project, because we start dealing with a lot of earthwork, uh, issues to make it, make it, you know, buildable, and make it, make it safe.
Theoretically, would this program work similarly? Theoretically, would this program work similar to the tree bank that we currently have?
That's kind of what I would think, if that's, if that's an option for us. I mean, you know, somewhere, and then, you know, if the, if the city then chose to take on a, a project along an Airport Boulevard, or along an Oshel Road, or some of these major corridors, uh, you know, there would be a funding source, a potential funding source to go after or use it to leverage for grant funds. I mean, a lot of times, the, the projects that are being pursued, the linear projects, uh, that's, that's how they're funded. They're grant efforts where the city, you know, generally be the elected official is putting up a, you know, match to, to make that happen.
And I think if somebody's gonna have to put money in the bank to sidewalk some other location versus putting a sidewalk on their own location, they may be a little more circumspect about asking for the waiver themselves.
Yeah, that's true.
That's, that's, that's a good thought.
Well, if they're asking for a waiver on something that they could put it if we insisted and the topo didn't, wasn't a big ditch, wasn't a huge tree or something in the way, or, or something with easement. If we knew that wasn't going anywhere, but we could insist on it, type thing. So maybe, cause I know legal will say, well, they wouldn't have been responsible because we would have waived that. They can't build it. It's going to a ditch, or it's in a ditch. And it's too costly or whatever. So maybe there's just some tool out there. And getting the seed money for tap grants, when you have active communities, it works because they'll raise funds, but we have areas of town where they can't raise the, the matching. So it would be a tool to have in place, be a great tool if it was available.
So am I hearing that it's the current thinking of the commission to leave, leave this as is, or is?
I think, I think as long as we, as we continue to be consistent, that your reasons for granting them are consistently the same.
Consistently the same. If there are no sidewalks in the area, it's granted.
But when you see.
That doesn't apply to new subdivisions. It, it's within an existing neighborhood.
Well, let me ask a question about a neighborhood that might be going under a significant rebuilding or a significant transition. The first one or two houses, you don't realize the neighborhood's going through a significant transition, you give a waiver. What happens when you're at the fifth or the tenth? And I mean, I'm thinking honestly of the Country Club and the transition it's going through right now.
And, and that's one of the ones I had in mind when I mentioned the, the demolition and reconstruction, because we've had some in there. And while there's not curb and gutter, it's a valley ditch, the land is flat on the house side of the right of, between the ditch and the property line. And a sidewalk could go there. Uh, so that's the type of situation that staff was, entire staff was looking at when we wanted to bring this up to you. Because we, we've had a few here lately that have made us really kind of scratch our head and go.
Would, would, uh, would it make sense, I don't wanna bog the planning commission down, but possibly, given that, that that decision was made by a previous commission to, to make these sidewalk waivers administrative. Would it make sense to maybe bring them back before the council for, let's say, six months? So that this commission could understand the nature of these and, and maybe get a kind of a bigger picture of the different issues that we have. And at that point, then this commission can make the recommendation maybe to move them back to administrative. That way, we're making kind of a more informed decision. I don't doubt that it, that most of these need to be waived. But I just, maybe to ease the, um, concerns of the commission, maybe a route to take.
Maybe I'm looking at this wrong. I mean, when you have someone who presents a sidewalk waiver request, I mean, they're normally presenting it with other, whether it be a PUD, zoning subdivision, something along those lines, that we're gonna be looking at anyway, correct? Most of the time?
For the commission, yes, for commercial properties.
I think we should leave it like it is. Staff is making recommendations as to whether or not to, to grant a, a waiver or not, and then we make the final decision. So I don't really see where we're gonna be saving us any work or, or, you know, making your job more difficult, I think.
I think it's the resident, I think it's the residential properties.
It's our one.
It's only residential.
It's the R one only.
The ones we don't see, and then I think Richard was saying.
Single-family residential only. It does not include apartment complexes, duplexes. It is single-family residential only.
Does a complete street.
Wouldn't go anywhere else, cause of what, what Ms. Denson is saying is, really makes sense to me. Um, it's a higher standard, you know, it puts in what eventually perhaps government is going to be doing based on demand. Where's the harm even though it, there's not one linking near it? Because the chances of that happening again, uh, you know, it's like, wh- wh- where do you break and say, is it after two houses get, you know, re-subdivided? Or it, that's the fairness in it. And what's the harm of making them put in a sidewalk? It doesn't ruin the character of a neighborhood. It, it's an amenity because people are gonna walk on your right-of-way. It's gonna look a lot nicer than having dead grass. That's my theory. And you're gonna keep people out of harms way when there isn't curb and gutter. And.
But I, I think on the old.
You don't wanna get somebody hit in your neighborhood and killed.
But in the old neighborhoods, like I guess Jackson Heights or somewhere, the odds of, if it's five hundred houses in there, the odds of, we're gonna be long good and dead before those five hundred houses get torn down and rebuilt to really get a whole neighborhood. It's, I guess if somebody was coming in, buying up the block, pushing them all down and doing the new, doing the whole street, that's kind of a different ballgame. But these neighborhoods with, these, these old neighborhoods that currently don't have them, they just have the little street things. I mean, it might be, you might have this piece of sidewalk in there for sixty, seventy years before someone else does it, I guess. That would be the only thing. It just would look, it'll look weird longer than it'll look good.
Would it, would it seem appropriate if we, again, continued letting the staff review the, the residential ones, and then if there were ones that, for whatever the sum total of circumstances, they didn't feel comfortable approving, then submit them on up to us? I mean, I don't know if that, that's really kind of how y'all.
That's kind of how it functions now. If we, for whatever reason, do not approve, which is rare, uh, then their option is to file an application to come to the commission. I mean, it's, it's like an administrative PUD. If staff were to deny the administrative PUD, then the applicant could file the application to the commission.
Rick, does the complete streets initiative address this issue, or is it a broad brush document?
It, it's a fairly broad brush document, but it does encourage sidewalks in all areas. Bert's more familiar with it than I.
Well, and what was approved, I believe, what was adopted by city council was support for complete streets. Uh, so that when a street is being reconstructed, that the city seek the opportunity to make it a complete street. So it's not a mandate, it is just a support for a policy. You know, um, for example, the neighborhood I live in is probably not going to be subject to a lot of tear downs and rebuilds over the next twenty years. Versus the area around the Country Club where the houses that were built in the twenties and thirties are being torn down. The lots are being subdivided and very large homes are being built. But those new homes will last another fifty years at least.
Well, if the lots are subdivided, they will come for us, right?
They will, but.
Subdivision.
When they come in to get their permit to build their new house. They make the request for the waiver, and since there are no sidewalks in Country Club at all, um, we are hard pressed to require them to build it.
And I can just chime in one more time as far as the, you know, the part of the city that's actually retrofitting these subdivisions. I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult unless it's being done as a complete project where, you know, we're starting and doing the entire neighborhood. Uh, we did one out off University, and it turned out really, really nice. It was a subdivision that was fairly modern, but the, the, the lots were flat. And so we were able to retrofit and, and add sidewalks through it. But then we've also taken on ones where the, the land adjacent to the curb, you know, had hillsides on it, if you were little, little noles. And, uh, unless those are done in complete, complete significant projects, then you end up with a very piecemealed final product that you might get, you know, twenty, thirty, forty, and I guess a hundred years later after everything finally got, got reconstructed, so.
Sounds like the residential areas really would lend itself to the, the bank idea. Because if you're waiving the individual residential homeowner and requiring money into a bank, then that bank can go into their neighborhood at one time to create that seamless sidewalk transition.
And that, that was exactly the reason why I was saying, if, if that's something we could do, it'd be a good consideration because I mean, again, in the last couple of years, well, this past year, I can tell you, the city spent almost three million dollars on sidewalks through various funding sources. And a lot of that was repairing existing, uh, some of it was adding, adding new. But I mean, I, I feel like, you know, with all the council members, it's a pretty important, uh, you know, undertaking with administration, it's a very important undertaking. Try to get those sidewalks back into a, to a functional state. But when they're, when they're nonexistent, and have an incoming comes in, or if a neighborhood even. You end up with a. This piece is new.
How do we get from here to there?
Basically, you instruct me to do it, and we will, uh, send a letter to legal and ask them to look into it.
Do you, we need to make a motion for that?
I'd like to move.
I'd like to make a motion that you send a letter to legal so they could look into it.
And we all second it and approve.
It's a great idea.
Wait, Thomas has a question.
I would, but, not that it's to do that, it'd be put in place. Whether that's something that gets addressed in the new ordinances and codes, or, uh, something that city council could pass.
I, I think it would be, based on my recollection of Mr. Lawler's prior opinion, I think it would be something that would need to be addressed by the state legislature to give that authority.
Even though we adopted complete streets, that if hypothetically, if that same exact lot came in, no topo, they would be required. Now, we say philosophically or engineering-wise, it makes no sense because what gets built in two thousand and sixteen and won't get finished to two thousand and fifty, it'd be a different product, different rules and regulations. So we're gonna have a hodgepodge. But we could go backwards in time and pick up all the things that we should have gotten. Like, I know in Westmobile, a lot of the subdivisions that front those big major programs, today, they would have to run sidewalk down them. And we didn't get it back in the seventies.
Right.
We got it interior, but not on those major programs.
I wasn't here then.
No, 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 no. No, I know that. But what I'm saying is, I guess a legal argument is written, you know, however, but, and I certainly respect Mr. Lawler saying that you can't make something, do something that, that is, they're not creating the impact. But if they came in today, they would have to put it. We could make them do it.
Yes.
And they would not be able to say, well, we don't connect to anything. Now, we hear that, but.
Well, and sometimes different lawyers have different opinions, so.
No.
Maybe Mr. Anderson will have a different opinion.
If they didn't, they wouldn't have a legal.
Could we also, and I may be the only one still confused a little bit about this, but could we get a little bit more clarification from Mr. Anderson about the sidewalk waiver expiration? If it's tied up with a PUD or a subdivision and that expires, does that then take the sidewalk waiver and expire it also? So I just, I don't think I was here for that last meeting, so I'm still a little confused about how that applies.
Anything further on that issue? We've got a motion by Mr. Gant. I think we had a second, so we're asking, uh, staff to ask legal about the sidewalk bank. Uh, last item on the agenda is the election of officers. Motion is second. I think everybody was by acclamation, but yes, if you wanna vote on, on Mr. Gant's motion, I'll hear that, uh, hear that vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we have election of officers. I asked Mr. Amberger and Ms. Sessions and Mr. Doyle, uh, to be our nominating committee. And, uh, Mr. Amberger, I think you've got a report from your committee.
Yes, we, we've met and we discussed it, and we're bringing three names forward. We'd like to, uh, recommend Mr. Gant for, uh, president, Ms. Latham for vice president, and Ms. Denson for secretary.
Chair, vice chair, secretary.
So we have that slate, we have that slate of officers.
Chair, vice chair, secretary. Sorry about that.
That slate of officers coming out of the nomination committee, um, unless I hear that there's a nomination from the floor, I will ask for a motion to close the nominations and let's call for a vote.
So moved.
Second. I'll, uh, we'll go, uh, ask for a vote on the chair, on the slate of officers with Mr. Gant as the chair, Ms. Latham as vice chair, and Ms. Denson as secretary. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. With that, I will thank everybody, particularly.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
One last thing. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for your, your time on the commission, uh, and your time as chair. We really appreciate it. And I just wanna say thank you.
Well, I've enjoyed working, I've, I've enjoyed working, everybody that's been on the planning commission, staff has been outstanding. Um, I've learned a tremendous amount, uh, since I've been here and have met a lot of people. And but for one or two small hiccups here and there, it's been a lot of fun. So I appreciate my time. I look forward to seeing all of you on the other side of the podium. I'll try not to. No sidewalk waivers. Good enough. Thank you all for being here. We're adjourned.